Okay, good evening, everyone. I would like to reconvene this recessed meeting of the Board of Selectmen. And today is Tuesday, the 26th of February. This is a continuation of last night's Board of Finance and Joint Board of Selectmen presentations.
And I'll do the same for the Board of Finance.
And at this point, I will turn the floor over to...
Good evening. My name is John Baker. I'm the Assistant Chief of the Stony Hill Fire Department.
And Mr. Galfer could be here with us tonight, so thank you very much for filling in. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry, John Baker?
Baker, B-A-K-E-R.
Thank you.
Okay, the budget that we had proposed is a 3.3% increase over last year, which was reflecting of what was minus out from last year. We're just requesting it be put back in. Some of the increases in the 202 account reflects what was the actual costs in repairs and supplies as equipment is aging and always needs replacement or repair. An increase in the 207 account is firehouse maintenance, in which the components such as the kitchen equipment, overhead doors, the vehicle exhaust system is now 15 years old and is requiring more and more repairs. The amounts requested by the FD last year is just being proposed again. To give you an idea, we've already spent all of the money that was allocated for the garage door and exhaust system for repairs with six months still left to go in the budget. What we are proposing in the capital equipment is 12 new of the 45-minute SCBA bottles. Chief Murphy was talking about that last night, where you get on a rotation process because they do expire their lifetime after 15 years. So we are requesting 12. This was proposed as a two-year project, and this is the second half.
I'm sorry, John, 12 you said?
12, that's correct. Another component that we put into the capital equipment is down the road, we are going to be needing a new SCBA cascade system, which is used to refill those bottles. That system is, again, over 15 years old. And not only is it old, but it is not as efficient as the newer systems. The problem is, is when that system was purchased, it was filling bottles that were a capacity of 2.2 or 2,200 PSI. Now, the bottles that we're purchasing now are 4,500 PSI, okay? When you get to those capacities, the compressor has to work that much quicker to fill the bottles and that much longer to fill the bottles. So now with, let's say, the fire we just had at Deer Run, we had 14 firefighters there, approximately used about 20 bottles to fill those. It's taking an average of five to seven minutes each bottle to fill. It's a long time to get back into service.
This unit's on the truck?
This unit, no, is in the station.
It's in the station, okay.
We do have a refilling capability on our rescue truck, but that's not a cascade or compressor system. That's just a pressurized air system. So if we do use that on scene, then that system would have to be refilled from the cascade system at the firehouse. And the...
And that's in 5202, equipment and supplies?
No, that's under the 403 capital.
Oh, capital, okay.
Capital, non-recurring.
Yeah.
Is that attached to the proposal, this?
No.
I can't see it.
No, no, actually, I'll have handouts for that. That's going to be the proposed aerial device. Another thing that we had put into the capital equipment is to replace some of the masks that we have for the air packs or the SCBA equipment. We are looking to replace it with a more high-temperature lens on the mask. You can see, you can pass it around, this is the mask that is currently being used and that got superheated and actually caused that lens to fail. The newer style is a much higher temperature rating, and it also has a...
Those close to the fire.
Yeah. It has a much higher impact lens as well.
How many of those are you going to replace, all of them?
No, we're looking to do it in increments. We're looking to replace 12 of those, okay? Each fire truck has six air packs on it. So that would do two of the front pieces, and then we would, going forward, look to replace additional.
How many do you have total?
Total, right now, we have probably about 30, between the apparatus and some that we have for the training packs.
Basically, it's a five-year approach to replace one.
Right. And the last item that we had in the 403 account is we were looking for replacing some of the radios. I believe the police department as well is looking to replace some of their portable radios. The current Motorola HD-1250s that we're using are, quite frankly, very unsafe. When the firefighter is wearing these, whether they keep it into a radio pocket on their turnout coat or, like myself, having a radio strapped, the radio is not exposed, so it makes it very difficult to use the controls on the radio. The only place that this particular radio has a, what they call a "Mayday" button, is right on the top, and it is about, it's smaller than your fingernail. And to press that with your firefighting gloves is not very safe and conducive for the firefighter. The newer style radios that we're proposing has a much larger external microphone that you do keep near your collar. And it also has all of those functions, a very large button, I can again pass this around, on the mic itself, so it would be out visible right at your, on your chest. And it's a much larger button that can easily be pressed with your firefighter glove. Another safety feature that they have put into that radio is the channel selector is voice. So as you're changing through the channels, it will tell you right through that speaker what channel you're on, whether it's the dispatch channel, the fire ground channel, the fire police channel. And it will tell you, instead of you remembering, "Well, if I need to talk on fire ground, I need to click my channel selector four clicks to the right while you're trying to fight a fire." Or if it is mistakenly changed to a different channel, do you know which one you're on and where you have to go to get to the correct channel? The radio that we are proposing also, that particular radio, we had borrowed from Brookfield because they saw the need for that, these safety features. We are proposing one that also is what they call a all-band radio or a dual-band radio, which that one right there only does the very high-frequency band range, where Bethel is on the ultra-high frequency range. So the one that we would have would be able to talk to both the town of Bethel and the town of Brookfield or Newtown and any surrounding towns that does have that different frequency range. So it would fill the need of both. Right now, what we have is a repeater in the fire truck that would allow us to use the existing radio on those, both of those frequency bands. And we would be able to eliminate that because if that fails, then every radio on the fire scene no longer works, as opposed to just one if there was a failure on one of the portable itself.
So is there anything that we have to change on the trucks?
Not at all. That would eliminate what we would need on the trucks.
How old are these old ones that you've got here?
These are, these are about...
They were, we did those with Pete, probably 10...
Oh, at least 10.
More than that was...
About 10, 11 years old.
12 years old. So there's a lot of technology change, right? Those radios that John showed now were not available when we bought this stuff.
And how many do you need?
Well, we are proposing to just start with the top five officers. So we were looking at five. We weren't looking to outfit each of the riding positions on the truck at this time because they're...
All expensive radios.
Yeah.
We don't have a lot of money, you know. Sounds like Brad or Bob. Do we have this? I don't see it.
Yeah, if you go into Finance and down over to Capital Plan.
It's in the Finance section?
It's in the Finance section.
So Finance, the Department?
Yes.
There's 60, $800 apiece?
60, okay.
And you're asking for five?
Just five.
Yeah.
If you recall, let me just chime in, right? If you recall, we spent, for the new radios, including portables, it was well over a million dollars, right? It's about $1.2 million, about 14, 15 years old. I mean, even those existing radios at the time were probably $1,000 apiece.
So those are 14 or 15 years old?
Yeah, I mean, Bob, do you remember when we did the radio system?
Those?
The whole radio system, we upgraded.
That's got to be before Bob, your time.
It's got to be before 2010.
Yeah, technology's changed a lot.
Yeah.
Bob, ask it, or anyone's question? You guys are asking this in Capital, where it says Capital Non-Reoccurring. You just put a placeholder in Non-Reoccurring, Bob? Because in this, it's saying they're requesting it to come from Capital Non-Reoccurring Account. That would really be the board of Finance's decision whether we bought it or...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is a recommendation.
This is how they moved it, and I guess they're just saying we recommend...
It's all in 1920. Can the Finance one?
I just think as a process matter, we should have those. And we'll figure out how to place her.
What was that?
Just as a process matter from now on, let's have the Department just put it in their Capital Plan, and then we'll figure out...
But that's what we did. If you look at the one from Finance, that's what it showed.
You know what I mean, for the, like, to have the Stony Hill capital request in the Stony Hill budget line?
Yeah, but if you do that, then it's going to wind up going to the calculation for middleweight. So we got to keep it separate.
No, no, just as a supporting document, so it's with the fire department.
But then you got to break up the Capital Plan into individual pieces.
Or repeat it, you know, you still have one.
You can do that, too.
Just make it easier to locate.
Will there be a supporting document uploaded to this? That'd be very helpful. I'm going to...
Okay, so it's a column.
Sorry, John, you're kind of suffering our process.
Oh, no, not a problem. So I don't... Stony Hill.
Yeah, it's that, that right there.
Bottles, yep, so radios, got it.
I know, I know. I have slums.
With that, Stony Hill, I'll hear.
How many masks were you going to get this year?
At this time, 12.
12?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Financial, yeah, continue Finance.
And that's a, that's a total of 4,000?
That's correct.
So that's the radios, 37,000, I think.
Bob, is there a, like, we, Cynthia and I can't get into 120?
What was that?
I can't get into 120? That's where you're looking, right, is in Finance?
Yes.
I can't get in there? Is there a Wi-Fi problem, or can everybody else get into that?
It was very slow for me, but I eventually could get to the Capital Plan. I can't, but it just comes over the part.
Sorry, Brad. I think I'm hitting the right button.
The Wi-Fi times out after 24 hours, they need to re-communicate, so that could be it.
Oh, yeah, it could be.
We haven't had two nights of meetings in a row?
What might, what might as well? Stony Hill.
Call it Stony Hill.
All right, I see it over here. All right, thank you. Stony Hill.
1819?
Yeah.
1819?
Okay.
Bring it inside. Tell them we're fine.
Yes, we have it. Right inside here?
Bring it inside to the pink box.
So the aerial ladder's... Yeah, right here, okay. Okay, thank you.
With the screen, so far. Okay, and the last thing I would like to discuss is what Stony Hill was talking about a little bit last night, we alluded to, is we were looking to get an aerial device in the Stony Hill district. As you can see from the first page of the presentation, back in 2013, when Holsworth did a study, it was in that, in that plan. As of 2016, which we're behind, a purchase of the aerial ladder device for the anticipated town growth for the Stony Hill area. The second page basically discussed what the town currently has. For the town of Bethel, which is a platform, a mid-mount aerial tower. And as you can see, that is 47.3 feet long, and the ladder itself extends 95 feet. What we're proposing is what's called a Quint. And it's significantly shorter, at 39 foot. It's a single-axle vehicle, and the ladder extends 107 feet. Granted, the disadvantage is it's not a platform. It basically is what they call a stick or a ladder, not a tower, where you can see on the back of the Bethel aerial device, there is a bucket that they can just stand in, and you can actually be transported from the ground up to that elevated height where this, you would have to climb with the ladder. But that is the advantage, is it is much shorter. It's good for residential use. Where Chief Murphy said last night, when he was going to the Deer Run Fire, where they had almost hit a car and had to kind of jockey it around, some of these smaller residential complexes, that would be difficult to get into, where the 39-foot would be significantly less challenged. The reason it's called a Quint is it is basically a fire engine because it will be carrying hose to do the fire attack. It will have a pump on it, which will be able to pump the water. It carries its own water supply, approximately 500 gallons of water, to start the initial attack prior to the water source being established with a hydrant or tanker trucks. And again, it would have that aerial device on the top, as well as carrying some ground ladders. So those are the five pieces that it's talking about. On the next page, don't worry, we already have a ladder truck in Bethel. Yeah, but it's a totally different animal. It's a different size, a different type, a different style. Therefore, it has different uses and some limitations. Yes, it's much better for, let's say, that rescue aspect. You have that safety and security of a bucket to stand in and make rescues maybe for a victim, where it would not be as easy to do on, let's say, a ladder, where you would have to climb up and down. Can't we just call mutual aid from Danbury or another town? Again, this was talked about briefly last night, where if it is not called with the initial dispatch, getting that piece where it needs to be utilized, right where the fire building is or where it needs to attack, that may be compromised by other trucks. Hoses that have already been laid out, whether it's attack hose or supply hose from the hydrants, you can't just drive over those and say, "I need to get up front." That's not going to happen. And a lot of the surrounding towns, other than Danbury, they are volunteers as well. And that timeframe of getting to the firehouse, getting a full crew together to run that apparatus and getting it to the fire is precious minutes that would take away from allowing it to be utilized. Are we adding to the current fleet? No, this would replace a 1983 apparatus, that pumper in Stony Hill. Do we have enough fires to substantiate the cost? Yes. It's especially based on the current constructions and trends. Going forward, you'll see lightweight wood buildings with no sprinkler systems, dense land use, tight access, and as we again alluded last night, the setbacks. How much, it's not necessarily the height of the ladder, but it's that setback, how far does it have to reach before it can get to where it needs to be at the roof or the window? Current fire code's for, excuse me, a four-story residential sprinkler, but you will not see that in the attics, the closets, and combustible void spaces. And again, that picture at the bottom would be the result of that. Again, some pictures. Ooh, that's for our... The function of the aerial device is to efficiently reach higher on a building for occupant rescue, topside ventilation, and elevated water stream. So obviously, this ladder is not going to just be for climbing. It will be piped to be what's called a master stream and would be able to spray water on the fire where it needs to be from an elevated position. As you can see from the lower picture, we're trying to avoid that ground ladder catastrophe of falling. If you have, let's say, icy conditions or snowy conditions, you can easily go up on the aerial device and make your roof ventilations.
John, I'm just a curiosity. I see the hose on the bucket. How do you hold the hose on the ladder? Is a guy standing up there?
Well, that certainly would not be a preferred method. You can lock your leg into that ground ladder, and you can utilize a hose, but that's definitely not, not safe. If you look at the bucket, that nozzle is attached to the bucket.
And what's, is there a kind of an equivalent attachment point in the...
Yes, so you look at that left, the picture you have there, the top-left picture?
Underneath that, that white ladder, there's a black pipe.
Maybe go back to the southern front page, you can see it on the truck.
But it's right there.
Is this it here?
It's a four-inch pre-pipe that flows underneath the ladder.
So the fireman's not holding the...
No, it's, it's...
It's a four-inch pre-pipe flowing 1,000 to 1,500 gallons a minute.
And was it a telescopic pipe that comes out?
Exactly.
Yes, okay. So the hoses and then the ladder going up the ladder would you go up?
No, no, it'll all be pre-piped, and just as the ladder is telescopic, that pipe is telescopic.
Why, I missed the part about the bucket. Why not a bucket?
Well, that would significantly increase the length of the truck, so we don't want to duplicate what Bethel already has. As it shows on the next page, the overhang on the mid-mounts can present problems in turns and while backing up, but this, it does cover a good amount of area to access. So in those complexes, those condominium complexes, where you have those tight spaces, your bucket might be in the way when you're making that swing or that turn. So that's one of the drawbacks. So exactly what we were proposing is the Pierce Ascendant. We've had good luck with that manufacturer. It's 107-foot vertical reach. It has a 750-pound tip weight. The truck does flow 150 gallons per minute of water. So like we said, being a Quint, it does have that capacity to do that fire attack, whether it's through ground hose that it would carry, just like a fire engine. But it could also flow as a master stream from the elevated point of that ladder when it has been deployed. It does have rescue features of being able to lower the ladder below the point of the turntable or the top of the truck to a 10% below grade if you did have to make a reach, if you had a car go down an embankment, or it would be able to help and make that more of a safer rescue as a anchor point. And it's made of heavy-duty, high-strength steel. So again, that's why it's able to have that 750-pound tip weight. The overall ground length is a little bit longer than the fire engine, but it is less than that aerial platform fire apparatus that Bethel does have. And as you can see on the next page, it does show you the significant difference in some of the lengths of ladder. The difference in the reach and the setback with the proposed 107-foot ladder versus a 75-foot ladder.
John, just curious, why did you all go with Pierce Ascendant versus a Seagrave? The Seagrave not made...
They do, but the entire fleet that we have currently is all Pierce. And we've had good luck with them, reliability. We went with them specifically because of the single axle, and still to be able to have a 107-foot ladder was the only one in the industry at the time. And I believe it still is.
It still is. So it's the only 107-foot ladder, over 100-foot ladder on a single axle manufacturer. So 107 feet, you know, most of the manufacturers, and I don't know what they have now, they don't go close to 107 feet on a single axle. What a 75-foot tip would...
And if you continue, we have pictures of the Ascendant that we did demo in the condominium complex across from the firehouse, the Copper Square town-owned, which are three-story. And the 107-foot with the setback is still able to make the peak of the roof without a much issue at all. And as you can see through the drawing at the bottom, it's a pretty narrow access to get that truck where it was. That's the red rectangle. And it is reaching across all of those parking spaces and making the peak on the opposite side. And the following page is the 120 apartments called the Farms at Stony Hill that began construction in 2018. And again, over 30 feet tall with substantial setbacks from the driveways. And that's the architectural draft below and a picture above. Again, it's going to be a three-story, similar to what we already are seeing at Copper Square. So you can see where the trend is, where a longer ladder and a longer reach is going to definitely be an advantage. The following page is a Quint that the Brookfield Fire Department had purchased, and theirs is only 75 feet. It is a rear mount and a driveway. So again, the Brookfield Fire Department has put this as a first-out-the-door piece because, again, being a Quint, it can be utilized as a fire engine. It can do its aerial operations, such as roof venting to let the heat and smoke out. And it can also pump the gallons per minute that they need to do the fire attack. And being on a single axle and being smaller than a ladder truck, it should be able to get into the same residential areas that a fire engine would. Again, with the time of year that we're in right now, the snow and the ice, if you can safely use a ladder that is already mounted on the truck, you're not going to have that issue of it slipping out from, from under you because ground ladders at this time of year really are not safe. And the last page, we're giving you an idea of what we are currently have in Stony Hill for a fleet.
We have one newer truck than that, don't we?
Nope, that's it.
The newest truck is six years old.
Six years old already?
It's already six, we had it in 2013.
Paul, it'll get older, Paul.
I know, Paul. Unfortunately. Yeah, that's the one we bought, six years ago.
I remember when I came in, it was, I thought it was like two years ago, sorry.
And the rescue is already 20 years old. And again, what we're looking to... And again, what we're looking to replace with this Quint truck, the aerial device, which again, Stony Hill has not had, is 36 years old. It was refurbished in 1990 and recommissioned as Engine 11 and being used as reserve in Again, with that truck, it will improve the response time and setup for aerial operations. You know, I can't stress enough that once you start your incident, it's very difficult to maintain and leave space for one that may be coming even from Bethel downtown. It's going to make things difficult and slow down the actual attack. Every emergency situation is unique, so having the versatility of this Quint apparatus, you can do much more with that first piece on scene, whether it is the fire attack. You can do the venting, getting that heat and smoke out to make it safer for the firefighters doing the attack. And it's all going to be out of one truck right at the front door, whether it's in the driveway or right in front of the house. And again, with most of the commercial development, Bethel's truck is still not going to be obsolete. We still need that platform truck. We still need that for commercial. But Brookfield did the same thing that we are proposing. They do have that platform aerial device, and they saw a need for how do we get that same sort of elevated platform in a smaller residential area? And they had purchased a Quint similar to what we're looking at. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The truck, when you guys purchase these trucks, is there a state bid or is there some sort of, or is it just based on what the manufacturer tells you?
We put out the bid and it comes back from basically what the manufacturer tells us.
Right, so there's no, you know, group, like when we buy police cars, everything's done on a state bid. So Ford basically says, this is what every police, you know, the state of Connecticut, this is what you're going to buy a police car for. There's no like group of, you know, consortium that guarantees that you're getting the best possible price from Pierce, you know? I guess that's my question. Like, how do you know, you know, right now, we're saying it's 1.2, 1.3, if there's really no, you know, bid process other than Pierce telling us what it's going to cost? How does that work? I don't understand. That's what I'm just trying to figure out. You know, everything we buy is done on bid, right? We buy a cruiser, it's done on bid. We buy a pickup truck, it's done on bid. We know what it's going to cost. They can't play with the bid specs. So how does it work in the fire? Like, does the state of Connecticut, do all you fire departments get together and, you know, how do you just know? Like, right now, you put it out to bid or you just guess it's going to be 1.2 million or 1.3?
Well, no, that's what we had gotten for a quote, but there is that competition between vendors. So when we put out a spec on this is what we would like built, then each manufacturer can come back with a spec and a quote to build what you're looking for. But going on customer service, going on reliability, going on what they can offer, again, Pierce was the only one that we had found that had the ladder size on the actual truck size that we were looking for and with the safety and reliability of the steel ladder.
So I guess my question, and again, this is just educational for me because it's not in my wheelhouse, right? It's not something I deal with. It sounds like though, what we're saying is, is that we're really, you're asking the Board of Finance to approve something that's really not going to go out to bid that based on the uniqueness of it, you're saying the Pierce is what we want and the number that Pierce gives us is the number that we're going to live with. See what I'm saying?
Let me try to help John a little bit. So it's kind of true, right? Fire apparatus are all custom, right? So a police car is a standard package. It's is what it is, and you guys don't change, modify it too much. You may modify the interior after the fact, but when the chassis and the vehicle comes from the manufacturer, it's one and the same. You'll get a custom bid, right? We take that, and we know who purchased the vehicles around the area too, right? So we use that bid history with this. Now, like John said, we'll go out to bid to other manufacturers. They'll come back with exceptions, maybe. It'll be a different truck and a different spec at a different price. The tough thing with this piece is, is the only piece on the market that comes, in the package it comes in.
Is the price locked in at all once you, they establish the price?
Once they establish the bid, and we've gone through this with them before, you know, usually we'll prepay a certain portion of the truck, which will save us fairly significant amount of money. So we'll prepay for the chassis and the motor front and then pay for the rest later. In the past, it saved us 50,000 dollars.
So in the bid, right, does that include like 1.2 or 1.3 million? Does that include all your emergency lighting and necessary equipment that goes into the vehicle?
John's a massive con artist.
Yes, it does. They will put that in, that's part of the spec.
So Pierce does the emergency, you don't have to bring it to another vendor to get all that on, and they do all your lettering and everything, all that?
Yeah. And then the dealer usually mounts all the loose equipment.
And in a perfect world, I'm saying in a perfect world, if money wasn't an option, would the platform be your choice? Honestly? Because I'm just thinking, you know, are we going for this ladder because we don't think the platform's a reality anytime, you know, in the future?
You mean the bucket?
Yeah, like, you know, working out of, you know, it just seems like on a fixed thing, and again, I'm not a fireman, don't pretend to be, but you're kind of limited as to where when you have, you know, the bucket and you're able to maneuver it. Are you able to do more with that bucket than you are with this piece apparatus? I guess is my question. Like, do they make a smaller bucket that would fit on a single, you guys are talking about single axle vehicles?
You're not going to get something that small. Again, we're looking to have a different vehicle than what Bethel has. We're trying to create that smaller vehicle. If you looked at the size of the platform versus the Quint, it's significantly smaller.
I get it.
We're looking, so that's my point, is I don't want to duplicate and just have two aerial ladders that are going to have a challenge to try and get into these smaller residential locations or the condominium complexes. We're trying to build something that is going to be different that the town doesn't already have.
But in reality, so this vehicle, this piece of apparatus that you're requesting would go out if Bethel had it call automatically too?
Yes.
So anytime there was a fire alarm or anything like that, you guys are going to send this truck?
And as an example, the fire that we had on the corner of Greenwood Avenue and Grand Street, two aerial devices were used at that location. We called in Danbury as mutual aid, so having two aerial devices is not uncommon to use at the same incident.
But are there just different sizes? Are buckets of different sizes? Is that...
Well, no, we're talking about the overall length of the truck.
Okay, but what Brian was saying about the bucket, call me crazy, but would it be cheaper to custom make a bucket that would fit on, because you said that you'll never find a bucket that small, right?
No, what I was talking about, as far as sizes, are the overall size of the truck. It has nothing to do with the bucket, the chassis.
You're looking for a totally separate, different kind of use of your vehicle versus the Bethel truck.
Right, so you're trying to get complementary vehicles that will work together and not get in each other's way.
That's correct.
Yours is basically maneuverability then.
That's the biggest key, is the maneuverability, its size, to get into smaller places but still provide that aerial advantage of being able to climb that ladder and do the venting of the roof or rescue operations at a window where you wouldn't have to take the time of getting ground ladders, which could be potentially unsafe. And certainly would be able to put water on the fire with the pre-piped water stream.
I understand it because I have an issue with our planning and zoning department. When they start reducing the width of roads, I kept on asking Tom, I says, is it maneuverable? He says, well, the big truck, if you take your time, you can, but if there's some cars in the way, Lord help you. But you know, and I still have this argument about why did we reduce the size of the streets in these condo complexes? It doesn't make sense to me. Maybe they want more land to make the place look better, but from a safety point of view, with, you know, these fire trucks getting in there, it's a no-brainer.
They increase the density. But this seems like a good alternative because it's also a pumper, it's a ladder, it's, you know...
Right, it carries the hose, you know, that's why it's called a Quint. It has those five applications.
So it's a first response vehicle?
Exactly.
So let me just make sure I understand that if you were going for a truck with a bucket on the end, it would have to be a mid-mount because the bucket has to hang off the back.
Correct.
And then now you've got a longer platform and you lose the maneuverability, correct?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
One thing I was, help me here, Engine 11, the 83, you're going to keep it, right?
No, I would replace it.
Or do you sell it?
Not really going to get anything for it.
We can try.
We can try. I mean, it's a shame because it's in, it's obviously in good shape.
I've gone on the internet and I've said, you know, how much is a Pierce, you know, 1990? And some nice values there, but I'm sure they're just updated too.
Yeah, we've kept it in very good condition. It's still a good truck.
So there's going to be some value to it?
Yes.
A couple of other questions. Do you know what the lead time is for approval to build it?
Usually about nine...
I would say six to nine months.
Nine months, I would say.
Depends on their backlog, and I don't know what their current backlog is. I mean, safe to say probably six to nine months from time of order to time of delivery.
Okay.
The truck, we've talked about this before, right? The truck is made probably in three weeks.
Yeah.
Right, but it's a matter of getting in the queue, getting onto the line and getting people together.
Yeah, I remember when we did the one six years ago. 1.3 mil, is that, is that a tight figure? Is that recent or did you just take last year's and give it an escalation? Like, how close is that price?
I believe it's close, but I don't think that that is a current figure. I would have to check again when Chief Galliford done exactly how old that bid is.
Well, we've got a little bit of time. If you could, just freshen that up.
Sure.
I know when Bethel took another look at it, the price came down a little bit due to the way it was configured. So, you know, we'd like to have a good tight figure.
And maybe the same question, if it's prepaid, is there a discount?
Yeah. Do you know if Pierce is part of that Houston-Galluston buying group to Brian's question?
They are.
It is, yeah.
They are.
I just looked it up.
All right, well, Brian, there is a buying group that is approved by most state governments where not every vendor is part of that, but if Pierce is part of it, then that's good.
Are there any grants that are available to assist fire departments in the purchase of...
There are, but it's very difficult. We have been putting in four grants, but because it is a new addition, it's something that we haven't had, an aerial device in our district, they're not apt to replace it. They're looking to actually replace equipment that is not up to standard and up to specs and is old and replacing what you currently have.
Would an 83, wouldn't it?
But you're replacing a pumper with an aerial device. And that's what would be...
But it's a pumper too.
Tom, Tom Galliford and Phyllis, the grant writer and I go through all the grants every year, and we are way too wealthy by the standards. Tom puts in an application every single year and we, and I've gone through Senator Blumenthal's office, we just don't qualify for any of it. They save those for the very poor, very rural districts around the nation, and unfortunately, we haven't even come close. But we try every year when they come out.
Last two years, we've actually applied for grants even to get those radios, knowing that they are so expensive, but the first time they says our radios are not even old enough because it has to be over 10 years old to replace.
How old are those?
These are probably now about 11 years old, 12.
Is there any, again, is there like a lease option on these trucks at all? Do they offer like a lease to reduce, you know, or spread the payout? Do they do things like that as companies or not?
I think we looked at it last time, Bob, and it didn't really work out.
It was cheaper the way we did it?
Yeah, I mean, we did look at it the last time we bought it, 2013, and then you said it was cheaper to buy it out, right? Are you still paying?
The answer is yes, there is.
I mean, we could look into it and see what the cost is. I mean, that's six years ago.
Yeah.
Who knows what they're doing now, right? With all the municipal crunch, you know? I'm sure they're anxious to sell fire trucks.
Bethel came up with a lease program for theirs, so I'm sure...
They see the numbers, but I can tell you as somebody who used to do leasing stuff, leasing is always more expensive than either buying it or...
It was at the time, the bonding rate was cheaper than the industry on the lease. And when you worked out all the numbers, it was over the life of time of the, I mean, it's less upfront cost to his point, but in the...
More total cost.
Right. Significantly more total cost.
Any other questions on fire trucks? I've heard more about fire trucks in the last 48 hours.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, John.
There's only two departments left to talk about, and there's not a lot of controversy in either one of them. And Tom Galliford cannot be with us tonight, so I'm first going to point you to Department 290, Emergency Management. Very modest increase here, 1% overall. That is related to the, just salary allocation because Tom actually has a couple of different jobs, so his compensation is split up among departments. And also a slight increase in the, we call it the Everbridge system, which is used for emergency notification. That, the price we pay for that is based on town population, and we're growing, so there, you know, very small increase in that. Any questions about that? Because there's, you know, not a heck of a lot in there. And then the other department is 300 Fire Marshal. And there's a slight increase in that department, which is related to the salary allocation again, and also a little bit of part-time assistant fire marshal, which is a current position, but due to the workload, there's a slight increase in hours in that. And that's basically it.
Small dollars. Just curious, why the big jump in office expense?
Can I explain that? So when we budgeted last year, we put the longevity, which is the 200, in there, but then they didn't line up with the right accounts. So the 200, the second line down, is really salaries, and the 40, 50 is office expense and the 1,000 is due to some education. So everything in the base and revised budget below the salaries just needs to move up one, but it's the way it's posted in the accounting system. So it has to stay that way.
So it's pulling from a different line?
Yeah, yeah.
So it was in dues and education?
Yeah, so dues and education's going from 1,000 to 1,500, and office expense is staying flat at 40, 50.
Thank you.
And that completes the presentations. If you have any more detailed questions about 290 or 300, I can, we can email it back to you if there's anything that you need to know.
I have a quick question about the part-time assistance, because I think it says a part-time deputy was added. Didn't you say that that position already existed?
Yeah.
So, but then what was one added? Was one subtracted before and then added back in?
The position is shared. Mike Connors is one of the assistant fire marshals, but he has a full-time job down in Norwalk, so the number of hours that he can devote to Bethel is minimized.
I remember this now from last year.
So we have another person who fills in. It's sort of like, it's almost like, you know, filling in part-time.
No, I remember this from last year now, about the guy who had the full-time job. Okay.
No, I remember this from last year now, about the guy who has full-time job. Okay, thanks.
Do you know, did Tommy raise his rates for fire marshal in 200?
No, we still have to review that.
Any more questions on the Board of Finance? We're on a wrap.
Yep. The Board of Selectmen is scheduled to meet tomorrow at 6:00, 6:00 or 6:30?
6:00.
6:00. We will convene to begin our deliberations tomorrow. We can't do it tonight because this is a, yeah, it's going to be posted at 6:00. It is posted at 6:00. Because we're using yesterday's agenda, we can't continue tonight. We have to let the public know what we're up to. So I will take a motion to adjourn, and then I'll see, I won't see you guys, but we'll see these guys tomorrow night at 6:30, or 6:00. 6:00, I'm sorry, 6:00.
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And where she carries, we adjourn.
We'll adjourn, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned.